...the public participation section of the meeting. And we have some people here.
Yes.
Uh, first is Alan Holp. You're looking at him.
Can you hear me?
All right. Is that better?
Yeah.
Many have inquired about the silence of the Northland Pines Education Association during the recent deliberations concerning the proposed move of the seventh and eighth grades to the high school and the restructuring at the middle schools, our middle school and elementary schools. I'm here tonight as co-president of the NPEA to speak about the proposal and the discussion that has occurred over the past few months. NPEA members served on the grade restructuring committee and were involved in visits to the school that currently utilize the 7-12 structure. They, along with other committee members, have invested a great deal of time in the process and have been forthcoming with the information they learned throughout the process about how our colleagues around the state work in structures that are different to the one we currently use. All told, the teachers on the committee have a combined seventy-plus years of experience in the field of education, though I won't say which one of them has the most. It has always been the practice of the NPEA to support our colleagues when they are involved in work as important as the endeavor the committee completed. Their report that was presented to the board in December provides the board with a unanimous recommendation to move the seventh and eighth grade students to the high school building. There's been much said about the fact that the recommendation to the board was unanimous decision. Individuals have hinted, and in some cases stated, that the teaching staff on the committee were not free to speak their minds for fear of potential negative consequences should they contradict the administration. I find such a claim absolutely without merit and insulting to the integrity of every member of the committee, whether they are a parent, paraprofessional, or teacher. While it's true that Act 10 and the resulting NPST handbook have changed the landscape of employee-employer relationships across the state, the fact of the matter is that conversations, some disagreeable and some uncomfortable, still take place between the administration and teaching staff when there are differences of opinion. And I'm confident that the teachers on the committee voted to make their recommendation without fear of reprisal should they be in disagreement with the administration. While the recommendation of the committee was unanimous, I can't say the same about the teaching staff throughout the district. And the board should not delay a decision tonight in hopes of achieving a unanimous consensus among the teaching staff. It would be dishonest of me to stand here tonight and say that every teacher in the district, especially those in the middle school and high school, are in favor of the proposal, or that every teacher in the middle school and high school are opposed to the concept. Having taught in the middle school for ten years and in the high school for the last six years, I can speak to the high level of professionalism and the integrity of the staff in both buildings, and the fact that they truly care about the safety, development, and success of their students, and will do what it takes to make sure that their students are provided with every opportunity to succeed. The middle school staff, which would be most affected, is a highly skilled group of individuals who worked cohesively as a team for many years. I had the privilege of being mentored by Dar Kudolsky when I was hired in this district sixteen years ago and taught sixth grade social studies. Many people thought Dar was going to retire then after feeling... But she's still here. Anyone who knows Dar knows how much of an advocate she is for her students and her colleagues in the middle school. In those years, the middle school sent teams of teachers to workshops at the Center for the Young Adolescent on the campus of UW-Plattville. I was fortunate to be on a team led by Dar during one of my first visits in the middle, my first years in the middle school. Teams focused on developing advisory at risk, peer mediation, mentoring, and transitioning programming for the middle school based on research done on the development of middle school-aged children. These programs made a difference in the lives of the students who matriculated through the middle school and built strong relationships between the staff and students. While they have seen many of their colleagues move on, retire, or move to different positions in different buildings through our district, there are still individuals at the middle school who were part of developing these programs and have strong feelings about maintaining a middle school presence in the district where their students are free to be the quirky, oftentimes emotional individuals that they are. The staff in the middle school are the experts in their field, and it's important to consider their thoughts about the proposal and recognize that they must be engaged in moving forward with whatever action the board takes tonight with regards to grade restructuring. On January 7th, the NPEA held a meeting that was open to all staff members in the district who wished to attend and participate in a conversation with the 7-12 committee about the proposal. Over fifty individuals attended the meeting, and a frank, open dialogue was had in which the potential benefits and concerns of the proposal were discussed. The staff present felt that seeing the larger vision for the Northland Pine School District was very important, and making sure that decisions to secure the future, both financially and educationally, for the district need to be considered and need to be considered now. What was clear to me as the person who moderated the discussion is the real desire of the staff, especially the middle school staff, to make sure that the decision made by the board is in the best interest of the students of the Northland Pine School District. And that was the goal of the committee that was formed to study the 7-12 concept. The Northland Pine School District provides our students with wonderful opportunities to experience success, and all members present wanted to make sure that that continues regardless of whatever action the board takes tonight. In the words of one of the attendees, "The board needs to vote as if each student was their own child." The NPEA recognizes the need for the board to be responsible stewards of the district's facilities, finances, and other resources to make sure students in the Northland Pine School District continue to receive a top-notch education that enables them to outperform students throughout the state and allows them to gain admission to some of our state and nation's best tech schools, colleges, and universities. I know this is a difficult decision for you to make. You've been presented with a lot of information, and you've heard from a lot of people about the potential benefits and the potential concerns. Benefits being a greater variety of course offerings, a uniform schedule, better utilization of facilities and staff.
Alan, I gotta wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. In short, the teachers of the district are consummate caring professionals who will continue to help students succeed regardless of whatever decision you make tonight. You can be assured that we'll continue to work together to make sure that the Northland Pine School District heads in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, next one. It's Craig Smith.
Good evening. Craig Smith from St. Germain. Many of you are familiar with who I am. Parent of five. This is just totally impromptu, don't have anything prepared, but I just heard again on the radio this morning the comment made about the fifty steps from the middle school to the high school and how that all these potential benefits that have been presented from the 7-12 restructuring could be accomplished just simply with fifty steps from the middle school to the high school. And first of all, my oldest daughter was a senior this year. If any of you know who she is, she's almost six feet, one inches tall. She has long legs and a real long stride. She goes back and forth from the high school to middle school to TA for Mrs. Gaffney over there in the science department. And she communicated to me that it is more than fifty steps, and for her, it's at least two hundred strides. So, a little mistruth going on here. And after our last meeting that we had, I think the next morning it was gonna be like twenty-some degrees below zero, and Jim, not to sing or yell or anything, but you said something about the strides from the middle school to the high school, not such a big deal at middle distance or whatever. But I just thought about you that morning. I thought, dude, how would you like to bundle yourself up and face twenty-plus below zero, ambient temperature, wind chills, thirty-five, four to fifty below zero if you had to do that and go back and forth? You know, I thought about that seriously, the challenge that that presents to the kids. I know it's only maybe fifteen to twenty kids, but it could potentially be more if we don't restructure. I feel it took the opportunity to come over there and take these advanced courses in the family or an advanced education if there are students that are able to do that. And then I think about the arguments who, if the children that are coming up into the middle school are able to advance, yet the parents don't want them to be in the high school environment, and they can't allow them to go over there and take advanced courses because they can't go to the high school environment until they're freshmen in age. So, it's almost if they are gonna send their kids from the middle school or to the high school to take a class because they're advancing mathematics or something like that, they can't do it because they can't allow their child to go over to the high school environment. And I just don't see that, how that argument follows through. So, just kinda a little off the cuff after I listened to the information this morning. So, just wanted to share that with you.
Okay. Thank you. Laura.
Laura Pruduski.
Oh, Laura Pruduski, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Gary J E W S K I. Good evening. Tonight, I would like to start off by saying I think this process has been a good one. It has brought discussion among community members, the school board, the committee that created the idea, as well as the administration. So, I think that the process has been good. I think it's fabulous that you started videotaping just this portion, and I would like to ask that you start to videotape and record and post every board meeting so that people who cannot be at the meetings can witness what is happening and that it wouldn't just be limited to a hot topic, hot item. I also think it's great that we have, this process has alerted the community to other problems that we have. We do have a declining enrollment. We do have to become creative about how we restructure to meet all of the students' needs. I think that has been positive. I don't view any of the dissension or conflict as a problem. I view it as a positive situation in our community. I also view this as enlightening taxpayers to what is going on with the decrease in student enrollment and the student population. We do have a financial issue coming up that we're going to have to monitor, and I don't know what the answer will be tonight, but through all of the communication, I think that has created a more alert group of people in this community. I think that we also need to consider as we're, as the administration has and the board has acknowledged that we have a declining enrollment, I think we have to be careful about the decision that is made tonight because as enrollment declines, we have less money, which means we have to figure out how to do what we're already doing with less. We have more administration, people in the administration than we've ever had in years and years and years, and I don't know how that's been justified in the past. I have never looked into it. However, one thing that I do know is that as the decision is made tonight, I still tutor in this district as well as others, and one of the common things that I see when I take a young child into an environment with older kids is one of the first things I have to do is overcome that anxiety that they feel because of being around the older kids, just even entering a building. And oftentimes, those young children don't wanna use the restroom and other things that fall into place, the manners. I have to explain quite a bit of styles of dress, relationships that we observe between boyfriends and girlfriends, and I'm not sure that that's appropriate for a seventh and eighth grader to mingle among as the seventh through twelfth grade high school is considered. More so, though, what I can't understand is why high schools, students will be going from this building to the middle school students, to the middle school building, and you'll have seniors, juniors mixing with the fifth graders that will be at the middle school. I can't wrap my head around it, can't wrap my brain around it, and I would like the board to consider all of the effects that could come into play. We're approaching the window for open enrollments, and I view this primarily as a safety issue. And when our family's safety needs could not be met, we did make the decision to open enroll to other schools, and I think it's, it's a tough decision for the board tonight because with the open enrollment window coming up, I fear for our district as that enrollment may decline even farther than what we've already experienced, and I don't think that we can anticipate what the parents or community members will do. There were a thousand people against it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Laura Vonson. Can't let the B O L now so out.
I'm not gonna take much of your time. My concern is my daughter. I've been with her for nine years. That's the experience I have. I'm not a teacher, yet as a parent I am. I don't have a doctorate in teaching, but as a parent I am. I found her reading problem when she was in first grade, when it was gonna be pushed off. Found out she was dyslexic. Had I not followed through and just let her go through the system, it would not have been found. I found that she had a fructose intolerance when she was very little, three years old. Took two and a half years for the doctors to find it, yet I knew something was wrong. As a parent, as this is my daughter, and I can only speak for her because she's my daughter, I'm asking you to vote no because I know she will not make it in that kind of setting, and we'll have to look at alternative measures. I have an older daughter that, yeah, she'll adjust, although I'm concerned about her because she's going into ninth grade. No one has talked about what happens to this ninth grade, eighth grade class that's going into ninth grade. We've shown concern for the seventh and eighth graders, but this first year, if it goes through, who's gonna watch out for them? They're just gonna be part of the mix, and the concern is gonna be the seventh and eighth, and that ninth grade is just gonna fall in place. So, I do have concerns about her, even though I know she'll adjust. As a parent who cares, who's been at school, you know as well as I, most of the students don't have that. The parents drop them off and they walk away. I care. I'm here because of her. I'm her only advocate. I can't talk for the other parents, but I can tell you from being at school, there are students that are concerned and scared. Think about what you're doing to them. Think about what she's coming up to. All I got.
Thank you very much. David Ellison.
Good evening. For several months, we have battled with words and logic about the current plan to move seventh and eighth graders into the high school. We believe that literally all of the pros put forth by the administration can be had by having middle school students walk over to the high school on mere fifty paces, albeit fifty paces that my brother stepped off. Our argument against making the move centers on the simple fact that we don't believe it makes sense to permanently expose twelve-year-olds to the social setting, peer pressure, parties, and the list goes on, that even good kids in high school are part of. For the past month, we have made it known that anyone who wished their name to be removed from the petition could do so by simply contacting us. Since making that statement, I am here to report that not a single voter has called nor emailed us to remove their name from the petition. I am in agreement with Jim Malady that arguing over education means that we all care deeply about our children, their education, and their futures. We also all care about our local community. I ask that you listen to the clear message the elector is sending through this petition. I want to read the actual wording of the petition for everyone tonight. It starts out, "We care deeply about the education of our community's children. Furthermore, we believe that the environment in which our students learn is equally important and that it directly correlates to their learning success and overall well-being. We do not support the moving of Northland Pine's seventh and eighth grade students into the high school. We, the undersigned, are concerned voters of the Northland Pine School District. We ask that the school board direct the administration to permanently cease efforts to move seventh and eighth grade students into the Northland Pine's high school building." Tonight, I present the signatures of 1,121 voters who do not want the seventh and eighth graders moved into the high school now nor ever. I want to personally thank each of you for all of your tireless efforts as our elected officials. Your job is oftentimes thankless, and I know it takes big shoulders to carry the weight and the burdens you have been elected to bear. This is a decision that will affect generations of students to come, and I believe that each of you takes your obligations very seriously. You have the ability to unite this room and our community behind this school tonight. Show the voters that you have heard their plea, that you will protect this educational institution that is so vital to our community. Tonight is your night to exercise the power that has been placed in your hands. Show all of us that your goal is driven by one mantra, "Kids first." As with sincere hope, I ask you to vote no tonight. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Hot actor vote.
Good evening. I just wanted to commend everybody in the room for the steps that you went through with the committees and being fiscally responsible. We've got some schools in the outbound areas with enrollments that really want to support what we're doing up there if we went to come and come up with some of the charter schools and other ideas that we came up with. I guess what I'm a little disturbed about is that we had a committee, an unanimous result came from that. We listened to the teachers. They seem to be good with this. We gotta sell this to the taxpayers here a few years again, guys, okay? And I'm telling you, you guys also know by sitting on a board that it's not as cut and dry as everybody behind you thinks. You know all the other state mandates and everything that keeps getting thrown at you that you're all juggling around, okay? Because it's not just as easy as... And then I hear people say, "Wait." Wait for what? That's why we are what we are. My daughter-in-law is a teacher in southern Wisconsin. When I told her what we're doing up here, pay raises for merit, you know, we are ahead of the rest of the state in what we're doing. Let's not go backwards, you guys. I'm just telling you, two years, I don't know when the referendum comes up again, but it's not the easiest thing to sell. And right now, what you're doing is good. We're moving forward, making decisions. I talked a little bit about that I got a $60,000 bill from the, from the education system in the state here. My daughter graduated. I didn't get no help. If she could have had a chance to maybe take the $20,000 off her freshman year, I mean her, in high school, that would have helped me. So, just those are the, there's a lot of ghosts to go with this. Is it news and uncharted waters? Yeah. But guess what? That's, we got a great board here. We got great teachers. We got great facilities. I think we've been doing it.
Thank you, Josh. NPEA cards.
Good evening, board members. I would like to take this time to say thank you for all of your time and dedication in the review process of this possible proposal and listening to our concerns and questions through our speeches, emails, and phone calls. Tonight, I ask for you to please vote no to this proposal. We can still move forward with the mentor program in addition to providing seventh and eighth graders with high school credits, opportunities, and high schoolers with opportunities to take college credits. In regards to the concern to fill the high school classrooms, we can look to form a partnership with Nicolay College to provide classroom spaces for night and weekend college courses as this is just one of many possible solutions to the high school space concern. Since Emily Rhodey has started at her new position, she has become a member of the Vilas County Coordinated Services Coalition, which I serve as well. During this time, we have worked to build a relationship between Northland Pine School District and Ministry Healthcare, along with several other organizations in our community. Last week, I stood in two of the middle school health classrooms to present on anxiety, depression, and suicide. Next month, this information will be presented to the high school students on the same topics. We, as a community and local professionals, along with the administration, need to work on the students' needs, which include educational and mental health needs. I have learned in my job that it is better to be as proactive as you can be. I believe that allowing the proposal to go forward will unnecessarily force the administration to put out fires rather than positioning them to be proactive. Tonight, I ask you to please vote no to this proposal. Thank you.
Please, clapping. I'm afraid that we don't do clapping at school boards. Sorry. Next one is Jacob Hyde. I'm sorry, I'm having a difficult... Okay. Sorry about that.
Heather, um, you know, I mean, following this from the beginning, and I didn't really agree with it when I first heard it, and it took me a minute to just kinda sit back and let it marinate, to be quite honest with you, and, you know, what's the pros and the cons. And in listening to it, to be quite honest with you, I can say that I'm kinda split. I can see as much merit to it as I can see difficulty providing the plan pays forward what we're representing. And for me, where I still remain cautious and concerned is that we're hearing about a plan, but ultimately, you know, I heard from Mr. Topol tonight, but very few teachers is, have stepped forward in, in supporting this, in my opinion, or maybe I haven't been to every meeting, but, but for me, I guess I would like to see an overwhelming support from a teaching staff that says, "This is, this is the way to go." As Mr. Topol spoke, he said that there was some for, some against, but, but for me, this is a decision that we can't risk, and so when I look at the potential risk and not representing that every staff member on board is for this, it just leaves me concerned. Not that I think they're sandbagging anything or anything like that. I have the utmost respect for all of our staff members, but if all of our staff members are not on board, perhaps we need to take a step back and look at what would put everybody who's actually going to work on this in the same camp. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jacob. Carolyn Ritter. She used to be up here.
Yeah. Good evening.
She knows how much fun it is here, too.
Good evening. The proposal to move the seventh and eighth grade students to the high school has received a lot of attention lately, and a significant part of this community, especially parents, are opposed to it. You've heard the concerns about mixing various age groups along with other perceived or potential problems, and obviously, those are things you need to weigh. It's good that the administration brings forth ideas for the board to consider, and they may be good ideas in certain circumstances, but it's the board's role to determine if it's a good idea for this district. The state has established local control for schools, and that's accomplished through a school board elected from the community. The community elects you to work on their behalf. If it was simply a matter of getting experts on board, all you would do is meet when we needed to hire a district administrator, but you don't. needed to hire a district administrator, but you don't. You meet every month to oversee the school district. It's important for you to listen to the community about what they want in their schools. That's local control. In the end, the center of education is the classroom, and the classroom extensions such as field trips. The interaction between teacher and student is primary, and I believe the building is secondary. Personally, I see little advantage in moving youth from one building to another, and I cannot see where there's any real savings. I especially cannot comprehend the idea of putting a charter high school in the middle school. That just seems counter to whatever ideas we're talking about in terms of how wonderful this high school building is for our students. I urge you as board members to listen to the people who elected you to oversee their schools. Their children, the community's children, are here. They pay the bills for these schools, and they want what is best for their children and for all of the children in the community. On a second topic, I had two of them on there, and this will be brief. I would also like to share my concern, and this was touched on by Mrs. Kuduski, the administrative costs that seem to have been increasing in the past years. I've heard concerns in the community about the rising costs that we see, someone told me it's gotten up to the point of being almost a tenth of our budget. It seems to me that this has been triggered in last year, I believe it was, when $500 per month was provided to the district administrator for mileage, that's $6,000 a year. And that's in addition, obviously, to salary and other benefits. I ask that you look closely at how our taxpayer dollars are being spent on administration of the district, when people of this community have been very supportive of referendums, but they're looking for those dollars to go into the classrooms, into that very, very important classroom where education takes place. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. So that concludes the public participation section of the meeting, and we'll add number nine, and that's the action I am regarding the 712 proposal. And I suspect that's what you're here for, so. So, what I'll do is, why don't we start off with a motion on it, and then we'll actually go into more discussion before we vote. And actually, I'll preface it with, anyways, the comments that I made before, I wish to thank the members of the 712 committee, there were several out there. I think the work they performed has been exemplary. They've taken a lot, and others are flack at times, but they really did work hard, and I personally appreciate it. I'll ask those on both sides of the argument to please respect those on the other side. You may not agree with their opinion, however, you should respect their opinion. Unfortunately, we've lost that ability to tolerate and hold an opinion, which is pretty Carolyn touched on it, too, a little bit. My opinion of the role of the school board, and Carolyn said it pretty well, should not to tell educational professionals how to do their jobs. These people are highly educated, highly trained, and by all measures have done an excellent job of advancing education here at Northern Pines. The role of the school board is not to make day-to-day decisions, it is to oversee oral operations. It's verify that funds are being used wisely, it is to provide direction for the district. The question of the 712 does fall under the purview of the school board. Northern Pines, by almost all measures, does an excellent job. I'm confident that we could put all of our students in a building in the middle of the woods, and with our staff out there, we would do an outstanding job just with that. My opinion that education is not about buildings, it's not about values, it's about the people, and we have excellent staff. To those opposed to the 712 idea, the district will have more and more 7th and 8th graders in the high school, regardless of what is decided tonight. If the motion fails, it will be my suggestion that all music, tech, ed, face course, if you move to the high school, it'd be my suggestion that we align bell schedule and a few other things. The bottom line is, if we don't move the 7th and 8th graders to the middle school, we're going to still have a lot of 7th and 8th graders in the high school. Part of it is state requirements, part of it is district requirements. We should feel lucky and blessed that we're not, say, Lakeland Union, you know, where it is there are 7th and 8th grade buildings up far away, would have to be bused, and it's in a separate district. The state is now saying that 7th and 8th graders can and should be taking high school-level courses if they're capable of doing it. But we have the fortunate thing in our building for next year. So we should feel lucky on that. And then, obviously, the other part, you know, the other part of that is high school students can now take college-level courses, and that is something that will save families in Wisconsin, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So with our mixing of middle schoolers with high schoolers, you know, I'll say this, at one point, does it actually make sense to just move the kids over? And at one point, it does kind of make that sense. Anyways, to those in favor of the move, is the board immune to the public opinion out there not to make this move? That is difficult for us, because at least I myself have received a lot of phone calls, personal visits, emails against the motion. So, and I think it'd be a little bit elitist on my part if I were just to say, "No, ignore them." So it's made it very, very difficult, because I know that there's some very, very strong arguments for it, and there's some very, very strong arguments against it, so it is a difficult thing. So, anyways, that's what I'll start with, and then the next item will be, we'll, someone will make a motion on it, so we can further discuss it.
Before we make a motion, I have a question on this motion. I was on the 712 restructuring committee, and the proposal, does this proposal include, refresh my memory, does this also include having the charter school in the middle school, or is this just a proposal for the 7th, 8th in the high school?
What the recommendation was is to move, to start with the 9th and 10th grade high school SOAR in the current 8th grade wing of the middle school.
Okay.
And then to bring the 5th and 6th graders into the current 6th and 7th grade wing of the middle school.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions by board members? No? Okay, does somebody wish to make a motion on it?
I make a motion the board approves the 712 restructuring proposal recommended by the city, beginning with the 2015, 16 school year.
Second. Okay, a motion has been made, and second, the board approves the 712 restructuring proposal as recommended by the city, beginning with the 2015, 16 school year. Now we have discussion. And we have, to a lot of people out there you know, we've been discussing for months, so.
Can we just go over why the 7th and 8th grade are going to be shipped over there and the SOAR high schools and the middle schools, because that keeps coming up.
Scott's gonna address the issue, but as far as numbers go, we're talking about moving roughly 150 or so 7th, 8th graders to the high school, and we're talking about for next year, the maximum would be about 20 9th and 10th graders into the middle school.
I want to hit at two main points. First off, if this restriction happens, you gotta forget calling it a middle school over there. It'll be a 4K through 6th grade, most likely elementary-based program all the way through. There's some things we've talked about curriculum-wise and so on, that we think we can really do some unique things with the 6th grade, just like any time you give us a situation, we have to make the best of those resources. So the first thing is, that building no longer would be the same configuration as now. If you really look at the 8th grade hallway, and there is a charter school committee that has been looking at it, you can really segregate the 8th grade hallway. Those students wouldn't be interacting, they would really become, and it took a while for the students, actually, who are looking at this building brought to SOAR high school, is they wanted to be in their own building. And that's about as close as we can get on this campus, so our students can take advantage of this building and the resources here, and still be part of some of the activities. So, if you really look at the 8th grade hallway, there is an access point that is just for that 8th grade hallway, at the end of the hallway where you come in. There's rooms down one hallway, the bathrooms would not, they wouldn't be sharing restrooms. They would most likely be eating lunch over here, or eating their luncheon in those classrooms over there, because typically, that's what charter schools do. Just, so, first off, that whole segregation. But the main reason why it's even on the table, and, you know, the high school charter school has been talked about before the 712 came up, is a school wants to find their own identity. In a very small population of high school students within another high school will struggle to find their own identity, and we will try very hard, we'll make, like I said, you give us the resources and options, and that'll make the best of it. However, it'd be much easier to have, be in their own building. This has not been driving this decision, I know it's come up numerous times, but the discussion of location has not been part of what we've talked about for SOAR high school for many years, and the planning committee from the Board meeting, which also was parent-driven in a mix of people. We just looked at options that would be available, and when this conversation started, we said, "Hey, there's an opportunity to have kind of paths to both worlds. You'd have your own identity in your own building to make choices, teach, educate students." But one of the things the committee and other people said up here, also talked about is students being able to come over to the high school and take up to two classes, which is good for letting some classes run. Also, our students would be involved in athletics, drama, academicathon, all the things that are offered here, so they could walk over, it would save the taxpayers money having them on this campus, and it'd be what's best for kids. We know we can separate them. I actually, you know, can tell you that I think there's some big positives to having those 9th, 10th, and eventually through 12th graders in that building to mentor, to be buddies. We've talked about mentoring, we've talked about reading programs. I see some of those things just between middle school and elementary students now. I think you've seen some of those things in the building next door as a K-8, you have 8th graders, 7th and 8th graders, I know volunteered down in the elementary room. So, we can take advantage of those situations, but also relieve the parents' concerns about the mixing, and I can understand those, and that's what we get, that's our charge, is to make sure kids' safety and how we educate them is very important. So, that's why we wanted those two.
You know, and as we look across the district, we're looking at 712, we're not just looking at 7th and 8th grade, we're looking at how we can utilize the spaces for our K-12 students throughout our buildings, including Land Lakes and St. Germain with the two charter schools, how we really increase that enrollment. And so, this all plays into, I wanted a couple of comments regarding what I heard tonight and what I've heard earlier in our conversations in our public meetings. I guess, I keep hearing, so many people are against this, and there was 1,121 signatures on this petition, and all these parents are against it. Well, tonight, a well-advertised meeting, a very small crowd, we had four new speakers, only four new speakers tonight that talked about this concept. One of those people speaking had children, has children in our district, so one parent of current children in our district, a new parent, new speaker, spoke tonight. That was it. Looking at the petition itself, you know, I guess what bothers me about the petition is the fact that we did hold our first public meeting, where we really laid out the plan, we talked to the community, we went through what the committee was going through, we laid out a plan on December 8th for the public. Prior to that meeting, we were told that there were 900 signatures already collected, so these people signed a petition without knowing the plan. Then on December 16th, we were presented with 1,062 names on the petition. Since then, we had another meeting, more board discussion, more information was given to the public. So between December 16th and tonight's January 19th, when the public really had the information, 59 signatures were collected for that petition. So that, I guess that tells me, you know, something. Go back to the meeting in the middle school gym, robo-calls were made encouraging people to come and to actually voice, you know, disagreement with the committee's recommendation. At that meeting, six people actually spoke in favor of the 712, and five people spoke against the 712. But the other thing is, and I keep hearing, they can just walk over here. Well, to me, if they're just gonna walk over here, they're still gonna be in this building. So is the same concern not there if they walk over? And what, and I know we only have Jim Feeney right now taking some academic classes, but we have to remember, it's not just about those academic classes, it's also about the careers, tech classes, and as we prepare kids to hopefully go to Nicolay and take some of those classes. But the other thing that many people are not aware of, and that's why the number's going to really increase over the next couple of years, AB Bill 1, the new bill that's out there, what's in there says that, this will start in two years, annually by January 31st, a school board shall post on its internet site the educational options available to children that reside in the school district that are at least three years old through 18, including public schools, private schools, participating in parental choice programs, charter schools, full-time enrollment, youth options, and course options. So we are going to have to advertise to all of our parents and students and families that these options are available. When that happens, I could envision 100, if they're not over here already, at least 100 students walking over daily, if not more, because they're gonna know what those options are. So, I guess we need to keep that, you know, in the consideration as we go through and have more discussion.
And Dr. Ritchie, when you mentioned that, you know, we could possibly have up to 100 students walking the 50-plus steps back and forth, where's the, where's the safety that is gonna be in between the buildings, rather than having them walk within, or they're monitored within a school building, whether they stay over at the K-8 building, or if they're within this building? So then, a concern that I would have with the walking would be the safety, are we gonna need to hire somebody to monitor students going back and forth? Because when you're outside, you're not within hood.
They aren't crossing a service road every time they come over here. That's definite. And I guess, you know, if we're going to allow them to walk over here, why won't we want them just to be here with their lockers, their books, their jackets, and be here full-time? I watched a 7th grade class today go back and forth in their, for Fayed, you know, and it was warm today, but again, go back to that 20 below zero day, if they're walking across in shorts and t-shirts for Fayed classes. The other thing, too, I wanted to say, I guess, you know, we talked a lot about waiting, and why we shouldn't wait, and I just want to remind the board about, a couple of years ago, probably three, three or four years ago now, this was just after Act 10 had happened, we had a meeting, Vilas County, United County meeting with superintendents and board members, and I know Jim was there, I'm not sure if you were at that one or not, I think we had a couple of our principals that were there. We went around the room, and we had to tell each district, there were about 10 or 11 districts there, we had to talk to the districts about what we're doing post-Act 10, how we're going to move forward, what our plan was. We were the only district that had, our handbooks were complete, we were working on the pay scale, and one of the superintendents of the neighboring district, he stated, and here's what he said, "We're just gonna sit back and watch what Pines does." Okay, that was his response. Now, to me, that tells, that tells me that we're a district that really looks, has a vision, and really looks forward, and we try to move forward as best we can. And I truly believe, although this move is contentious with some people, that if we look at what's best for the students across our district, it would be approving the 712 concept.
May I ask, I don't know if this has been asked before, I don't recall it has, do we know how many minutes there would be in passing time throughout the day within the hallways, where there could be intermingling if this proposal does move forward?
Currently, at the high school, it's five minutes between passing periods, but keep in mind, two days a week, we have the block schedule, so there's four periods, so they would actually pass three times that day. So you're looking at 15 minutes, or looking at 35 minutes? 35 minutes, three days a week, 15 minutes, two days a week.
And currently, I was within the high school a few times, doing some tours, and because of the size of our building, they need, pretty much need all the five minutes to get to their lockers, to change schools, or change classrooms, however, but then we did talk about with this proposal, having the 7th and 8th in their, in their area, so you're feeling like we'll still need that much passing time?
We'll need, we used to have eight, so we cut it down, we cut it down to five, and if there's any high school students out there, there might be a couple on the other, I think they'll be the first to tell you that five minutes is tough to get from one end of the building to the other, especially if you are in the FIAE locker room going down to tech ed. It's tough.
Well, I noticed in the tours that I've done here, is their passing time, their passing, they're getting to their next.
Now, keep in mind, the way the plan is for the seventh and eighth grade, for social studies, math, and language arts, they're going to be in that pod. They're still going to have the five minutes, they can certainly use the restroom, go to the bathroom, but they're not going to have to leave their classroom area for those three classes, they're all right there.
Okay, other comments? So, you guys ready for a call of questions?
Call of question.
Well, I'll say this also as well. I wish the board to please everybody in the room, obviously, there's going to be some people disappointed one way or another, but hopefully, that it will please as many as we can, so... And I've also, yes, sir?
I heard a question, someone on the board, a question about the vote.
I was going to do that anyways, so, just because of the importance of the vote, so... Well, per Ken's suggestion, I mean, I'm the one that will call those, so, and actually, what I'll do is, I'll start with you, Amy. Actually, I'll...
Can I make a comment before I go? Can I say one last little blur?
Yes.
Just for myself. Mr. Illison, I'm going to go with his very strong statement, and the board should vote what is best for the kids, so that's how my vote is going to be, and I vote yes.
Okay, how do we get a rating?
Well, I vote yes, and I'll vote it again next time.
So, the motion that's on the table is that the board approves the seven twelve restructuring proposal as recommended by the study committee, beginning with the 2015, 16 school year. And Amy, you started off in your...
Yes.
Okay, Polly?
Yes.
Okay, John?
No.
Okay. Mike Thielen?
Yes.
Say yes. Eric Kemp?
No.
So, Jennifer Payne?
No.
So, Jim Mulley, I'll end it, I'll say no. So, the motion, what do we have up there? So, motion fails, so my apologies to those on the other side, so... Otherwise, we will move on.